I don't want to scare people.
An- an easily scared us. An easily scared us.
Somebody in there?
Don't think so. I- not unless... No, I just looked at it and just got out of here.
So, Rick?
I can't be your- I can't be your sermon. No. I don't know. But I don't understand why you can't just get through the rest of the agenda. Well, then, get down to it. I think everyone has finished asking their questions.
Definitely.
Everyone needs to finish their questions, decide how they're going to do this. Someone needs to do something or decide to do nothing. A move to, um, they- by taking this out of order, you could, in the sense that someone's got to be here. There's many people who wanted to, to hear about this, but this is going way too long. A lot of this was from back in the present. You know, it happens because it's reasonable to let this be done, but a lot of all the stats that it needs to- stuff that could have been done right, but then it could be done in this form. But it's lost and it is, and it's continuing to be done.
If we can start getting everybody back together, we are actually one minute behind schedule.
It's going to be over in a few minutes.
Bonnie, you want to comment?
I don't know.
Silence of the public. Never much better. You're not a 95. Now, the old- the one back in the 70s, right? Hell, that's actually most expensive. That's right. Or- or green.
One green.
About dark chocolate chip back in the eighties.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Right before James had with all. Finances.
Finances.
So, if that's okay with you, I'm willing to do that.
What is that? Somebody holding up six fingers. I don't know what that's about.
What is this?
I didn't say when the six minutes started. Okay, thank you all for sticking this out. Let's get comfortable.
I had one more question for Ryan.
Mayor, will you, excuse me, will you announce the time that you're ending the recess?
Yes, sir, it's a little bit delayed. It's 9:40. I think Mr. Sanderson just said that he had a additional question for Mr. Rappley.
Yes, councilmember. Councilmember, sorry.
You go ahead and put that off. I'll go ahead and, and, and put that question off for a later time. I think what we can do is we can go ahead and move to go ahead and table this for, for now. If that's...
Till June. You moved to table till June?
Yes.
Second.
I'm confused. The first was, that was kind of a dual motion.
Oh, I, I apologize. Just a single motion to table thi- this, the, uh, the evaluation until June.
Okay. That's a first. I believe we have a second by Mr. McCormick. All in favor? Okay. Motion passes. Evaluation postponed till June.
I also would like to move to table the entire consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Tableing what?
She moved to table the entire consent agenda.
Mayor, before we can act on that...
Yes, sir.
The next item on the agenda is acknowledgements and presentations, followed by citizen comments on non-agenda items, and then the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
So, I would ask that that motion to table the items on the consent agenda be deferred until the council can do acknowledgements and presentations and do citizen comments on non-agenda items to adhere to the agenda as posted.
Yes, sir. So, you're suggesting we start with the acknowledgements? Is that correct? Okay. So, for starters, we're going to recognize, uh, former mayor, Tim Howell. Mr. Howell, if you want to come up here and receive a small award from the city, just kind of recognize me from your service, I think a pause is necessary. Mr. Howell is very quick to- former mayor Howell is very quick to point out that he's one of the longest, uh, living residents of Castle Hills, and he's served a great time to our city, so I think we all are appreciative of your, your time.
Thank you, JR. Actually, Wayne Carter's been up here longer than I have. I wanted to point that out. So, there won't be any confrontation.
And next we have, uh, former councilmember, Amy McLinn. Ms. McLinn has, uh, worked very hard for the city, and she still hasn't stopped because she's still here four hours later. Last but not least, we have, uh, Ms. Moreta Scott.
Thank you all so much for your service to your city. As you can see here tonight, not all the meetings are sunshine and rainbows. Okay, uh, next we have citizens' comments on non-agenda items. First, we have Robbie Casey. I think she's left. John Squire. Pass. Moreta Scott. Pass. Joe Rodriguez.
Joe Rodriguez, 110 South Gardenview. Greetings, council. Everybody seems to be worried about insurance and liability, lawsuits. This is nothing new. Year in, year out, this has been something to talk about. Oh, and by the way, before I get started, thank you so much for, uh, volunteering, Ms. Crawford. I've even had the opportunity to witness volunteers in here at 6:00 in the morning, when the whole place is closed, when mark pickup trucks out here. It's pretty amazing. But, um, from standpoint of getting back to lawsuits, insurance, concerns about liability, I know that, uh, this is public information. Accusations were made in the past regarding to this city. Accusations were made from a standpoint of streets and measurements and different things. It's a good thing there wasn't a defamation lawsuit. Could there still be? I don't know. Could there still be a lawsuit on that? I don't know. Who knows? What happened to that? How much in a matter of time, resources were involved there? How many people had to be paid? How many people were contracted? Anybody think about the time and value of money and all of that? Whatever came about in that? I'll say once and I'll say it again in relation to another agenda I've been cutting up is, please be strong. Little advice, because what everybody tries to do here is ring up fear, uncertainty, doubt, and intimidation. It goes on and on and on and on. But, uh, stand your ground. I very much appreciate that you all are trying hard to look at the facts of the documentation that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Tim Howell. Amy McLinn. Pass. Perfect. Okay, now we are on to the consent agenda.
And I'd like to move to table the entire consent agenda to June.
Mayor...
I second it.
I would, uh, highly disregard that. I have the confirmation for the fire chief here. He's come down from...
That's why I want to table it.
Another state, uh, to be confirmed by city council.
That shouldn't be on the consent agenda. I second the motion.
Mr. Snoll?
The, the motion to table can be amended. Well, the, the motion to, to table, uh, would respectfully, it would be possible for the city council to pull item C in regard to the recommendation of the city manager to appoint James Lattawig to the position of fire chief. That could be pulled from the consent agenda and discussed fully and not part of the consent agenda, rather than the whole consent agenda being tabled, since the prospective new fire chief has traveled all the way to San Antonio from Maine to be present at this meeting. The city council can do what it wants, but I think the council should be aware that Mr. Lattawig is here for the express purpose of being present when this was being considered.
I respectfully move to amend this winger's motion, as specified by Mr. Snoll. With regard to item C, I'd like to have it separated out and discussed separately. I object to tabling that item since the man is here from a thousand miles to the northeast, and I think it's appropriate that we accommodate him.
I think that's a generous motion. Second?
No.
Okay. I'll ask one more time. Uh, second to Mr. McCormick's original motion or amendment? Motion dies for lack of a second.
There's no further discussion. There shouldn't be any discussion at all, so you vote on the motion to table as may.
Okay, so we'll be, uh, tabling this until, what is it, June? The regularly scheduled meeting in June?
If the council so votes.
Okay.
You ask for a vote.
Call for a vote? All in favor?
What's, what are we voting on?
On, uh, rescheduling the consent agenda till the regularly scheduled meeting in June.
Okay, is that the, is that, is it pro, yes or no, or we want...
Yes. Pro is for yes, no is for no.
Okay.
All in favor? Okay. Three, uh, yes, and Mr. McCormick? Opposed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a point that, uh, the last time the fire chief was confirmed, it was done under, um, consent, um, prior to myself being city manager, so I just followed the historical, um, process for Castle Hills.
No, thank you, Mr. Rappley. Uh, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing on an application from the Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church for an amendment to a special use permit granted in March 2011 to add property located at 113 Ivywood Circle. Legal description CB 5007B, Block 3, Lot 3, to the property included under the SUP. I'd like to open the, uh, open the public hearing at 9:50. I think we have, uh, only one person signed up for that, or, I'm sorry. This is, uh...
Is anybody here to present?
Well, is anybody here to present? That's the next question. What's, uh, with, uh, Mr. Snoll, I believe we have the open hearing first, or do you want to, uh, have the presentation first?
Um, it would be fine for Representative of the Wayside Chapel to make the, a presentation, and then to have any citizens pre- any questions from the governing body, and then have residents who wish to speak, um, speak during the public hearing, and then close the public hearing.
Perfect. Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is John Gordon. I serve as the executive pastor at Wayside Chapel, and I'm going to keep my comments brief, uh, because of the hour. We are, we submitted, and our application was accepted on April 3rd, a request to amend the SUP, the special use permit that was granted us in 2011, to add the property at 113 Ivywood, which the church has purchased, and subsequently went before the zoning commission on May 7th. And, uh, we are asking for the council, uh, to approve an application and the recommendation on the part of the zoning commission to grant, uh, the amendment to the special use permit, amending the special use permit of 2011 by adding that 113 Ivywood property. We are also making this request, I might add, uh, based on, uh, two points. Number one is that we are making this request for consideration based on the City of Castle Hills Code of Ordinances, that there, we are making a request that that ordinance allows us to request. We are not making a request that is outside of the City of Castle Hills Code of Ordinances. And I specifically draw attention to, uh, the Code of Ordinances Division 1, A Single Family District, Section 50-61, Use Regulations, Paragraph B, Number 5, which lists churches as being acceptable within a single family district for being granted an SUP. Also, I make reference to Section 50-500, where the decision of the council, uh, is to be made, um, with consideration of not adversely affecting traffic, public health, park utility, public utilities, uh, public safety, and gender welfare. Those are the considerations based on the ordinance that the council needs to make consideration of in considering, uh, the recommendation of the zoning commission. And lastly, I would say that we have submitted this request according to the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. It's a federal law designed to protect houses of worship from discrimination, and I quote that Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which states, quote, "No government shall impose or implement a land use regulation in a manner that imposes a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person, including a religious assembly or institution, unless the government demonstrates that imposition of the burden on that person, assembly, or institution, A, is in furtherance of a compelling government interest, and B, is the least restrictive means of furthering that compelling government interest," end quote. And I thank you for your consideration of the recommendation to grant this amendment to the SUP that was granted in 2011. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snoll, you would like to, you say it's okay to proceed with comments now?
I think it would be appropriate to ask for comments from citizens at this time, so that you can conclude the public hearing and get into the next agenda item.
Perfect.
I will have a statement of recommendation on the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Moreta Scott, 207 Prince Drive. Uh, my question was, under what section of ordinance 1069 was this property going to fall? Was it going to fall under number two, um, including the properties at 103 and 105? Or was it going to fall under number three, the properties 100, 102, 104, 107, 109, 111, 115, and 117? So, basically, it wasn't clear under the ordinance that's asking to be added in, but it wasn't clear if it was going to be used only as a residential facility for visiting missionaries and guest speakers, or if it was going to be used just for church and religious purposes. So, could someone on the zoning commission, um, answer that question for me, since it wasn't clear in any of the documentation?
We have a member of the zoning commission standing in back.
Janet Baker, 213 Hibiscus, and I believe, um, the representative for the church would probably answer that question better, but my recollection of the meeting was, is that it was for missionary use, um, and they have another facility within the same cul-de-sac that was also being used for missionary use. And, um, the question was, how many missionaries? Maybe six, um, a couple of times a year. It was not an enormous amount of time, but they might stay for 30 days. And that was my recollection of, um, what their request was for.
So, Janet, as long as you're up here, um, I believe that there was, there was a question about one of our codes or ord- I believe there was a question about one of our codes or ordinances that you had a problem with?
Mr. Snoll? Point of order.
This, this is not the time for questions and answers. This is the time to let people give statements to the governing body about the application for the amendment to the special use permit.
Okay.
There'll be an opportunity under the next agenda item...
Okay.
...to pursue those inquiries.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you so much, Ms. Snoll.
So...
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
And thank you, council. She answered my question. It fell, falls under number two, not number three. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in public hearing?
I think the gentleman wants to make a comment.
Yes, sir. Please come on up. Sorry.
The man from the church wanted to make a comment.
Okay.
Go ahead, John. Joe, go ahead.
Joe Rodriguez, 110 South Gardenview. I heard John from the church speak a little bit. I will not tell you what you should be doing, how you should be voting on this. Little zig-zigler, tell you, tell you, tell them, tell them what you told them. Won't go that route. I'd like to share some information with you, if I could. There was some words bantered about earlier, something called precedence. I mentioned to you the FUD, the fear, uncertainty, and doubt, and intimidation, what you should be doing. There was. I happened to be at the zoning meeting. There were minutes in that zoning meeting, and I want to applaud Ms. Baker because, aside from the group, she also did ask some key questions, um, and concerned about the actual codes, the ordinances, and a variety of things. Simply put, when you tear down a house, you need to put back a house. Other phrases, you know, one thing that I questioned is in this agenda item, as it's written, grandfather? You know, I know that Wayside Chapel, the entity, has an end goal in mind, and they made that public multiple times. They're hoping to acquire in some form or manner in some point in time. To my knowledge, I think this is the 11th property. Once they're done acquiring in some form or manner, that 12th property... Once they're done acquiring in some form or manner, that 12th property, they're planning to raise, tear down everything, and have these grandiose plans. If they're not paying taxes now, once that 12th property is acquired, what's it going to do? I've been afforded in years past, just as Mr. Schnell mentioned, to also be on the zoning commission. I've learned and listened from many other people, but there's something called code compliance, and about 9:00, 9:00 PM tonight, I also heard our city manager say something about right-of-way cleanup. When I was at the zoning meeting, I mentioned, were there any complaints? Were the permits paid for? Because I know that Wayside Chapel, like many others, likes to somehow finagle an annualized donation, which is equal to, hey, we're a great neighbor. Well, what does that amount to? What about these residents that have to pay for permits all the time? What about the letters they get from code compliance? Well, case in point, that's on tape, people are asking about documentation, you can even go as far back as Rita Hoyle, Laverne Jaffet's sitting up front here, I said, well, that's great, but did they receive a notice, a complaint for that? City manager then said, no. That zoning meeting that was several days ago, I'd mentioned about cleanup and right-of-way, guess what, Wayside Chapel finally did, and it's been almost a year. They cleaned their right-of-way in the alley. It was this big. Where was code compliance? I can almost bet in that year timeframe, heard the word permits, heard the word complaints, a code compliance person, oh, I'm sorry, they're also, they're paid employees, they're coming out of our budget, our revenue. So I'm not going to tell you, I hope I was able to share with you, some of the things that have been going on, and, and it is a matter of public health and safety to me, because what about the rats and vermines and rodents? They took almost a year, and do you need proof of something like photographs? I can get those for you, too. Are they time and date stamped? Absolutely. I'd like to ask your consideration, because I don't think this is grandfathered in, and if they're hoping to acquire in some form or manner that 12th property, and if we look at precedents, and if we're worried about lawsuits, we're worried about liability, how will this council stand strong for its residents? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Do we have anybody else for the open hearing?
Mayor, you might ask Pastor Gordon if he has any comments to make at the end of the public hearing.
Okay. Ms. McLennan, do you have a comment for the public hearing?
Amy McLennan, 105 Villa Anne Street. My concern is that nowhere in the documentation that's been put in front of council, or that was approved by zoning, does it actually specifically state that this is going to be under the Number 2 residential type of property, under the SUP? There are two different uses that are stated in Ordinance 1069, and nowhere in the application to zoning does it specify that they want to be Number 2 residential. So maybe it's in there and I missed it, but I don't see anything that actually puts that number in front of council for what type of property it'll be.
Thank you, Ms. McLennan. If we don't have anybody else, I think Pastor Gordon wanted to finish that up.
Yes, I want to address the question that's been raised, and put your minds at rest. To the question that was asked, will this particular property fall under Number 2 of the SUP, 103, 105 Ivywood, which are residential facilities, or Number 3, the properties that are listed there to be used for church and religious purposes? In the application, it's very clear, the proposed use of the property, religious church use. It's Number 3.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Baker?
I would like to point out that in 2017, the zoning commission and council passed an ordinance that said there will be no SUP on a Zone A residential property, and Number 2 within that, and I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to make this presentation, I didn't know I needed to, so I don't have the actual code numbers, and, but it said that there would be no SUP granted for religious use purposes, and I believe that this is a religious use purpose, and I voted against it, other two members of the board voted for it, but I believe that there is valid code evidence for not supporting a vote that would grant this SUP. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. So that is it? I believe we can close the public hearing at 10:05?
I have a question. I'm sorry, I don't know your name. The gentleman, yeah.
John?
John? Oh, okay, hi, sorry.
So perhaps we should get into the next agenda item before we start asking questions?
We're sorry?
Should we go into the next agenda item before we start asking questions?
Oh, is that what we want to do?
Yeah, Mr. Trevino, I think if you can close the public hearing, you said at 10:05?
Yes, sir.
And then open up matter, item number 2. Again, certainly, let's have council members, if they have questions for Pastor Gordon, go ahead and address them. I would then like to address the comment made by Ms. Janet Baker, and also give the council a recommendation on this item.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Schnell. Moving on to agenda item number 2, consider the recommendation of the zoning commission to city council to approve an application from the Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church for an amendment to a special use permit granted in March of 2011 to add property located at 113 Ivywood Circle. Legal description CB 5007B, Block 3, Lot 4, to the property included under the SUP.
Lot 3 or Lot 4?
Lot 3.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I would like to not have a motion until the questions and answers are, are done-
Okay.
...because I'm going to recommend that this item be tabled. I will explain that, but I want to give the members of the governing body an opportunity, since Pastor Gordon has been here since 6:15 or 6:30, for the council members to ask their questions about this item, and then I'll try and answer Ms. Baker's comment, and explain my recommendation to table this item until the June meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Schnell. Ms. Winger, would you like to start? Ms. Winger?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to start?
No, he's recommending that we table it.
But after the questions.
I'm sorry? Oh, af- after, after which question?
After any question you might have for him.
Okay. Well, should I ask the question now, or should we just table it?
As I said, Ms. Winger, since Pastor Gordon has been here and waited patiently through all the other things the council has done this evening-
He'll go in and ask-
...since you just heard the, the presentation and heard the, the comments from citizens, I think it would be reasonable for you to ask your questions, so that he could answer them this evening, and it'll make the process go a little faster in June, at least in theory.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor Gordon.
Yes.
We actually know each other, right? What is this substantial burden that would impact the practice of your religion?
Well, that's, that's something that the, that the council would have to, if, if the council is to rule against the recommendation of the zoning commission, that the council has to determine what that substantial burden is.
No, I'm asking you. I'm asking you what your substantial-
Well, the substantial burden, okay.
I mean, you, you've got a whole bunch of property there-
Right.
...already, so it's, it's hard for me to understand, what is this substantial burden for you if this is not granted?
The substantial burden would be being prohibited from using the property for church/religious purposes.
Okay. You familiar with the fact that the city had a lawsuit that was brought by the Castle Hills First Baptist Church many years ago?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with the ruling on that?
Not, not firsthand, no.
You ought to read it. You really ought to read it, because in fact, this was Judge Roy Ferguson said that you cannot simply assume that in all instances, the city has to consider its own interests and growth and traffic, and that does not necessarily apply. And I think that it was a, you know, very important decision, and something that people should not forget, so, you know, you know, we've always gotten along, I have a lot of friends that belong to your church, I've been there many times, but, you know, I think it's kind of a hammer, that a lot of people don't understand what that decision was and should, and not be intimidated by it.
And that's why I quoted the city ordinance in that regard, on those four, five issues that the council needs to consider-
Okay.
...of whether or not to approve what the zoning commission has recommend, recommended.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Appreciate it. That's my question.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I don't have a question.
No question?
No questions.
Okay, Mistress Anderson?
No questions at this time, thank you.
No questions at this time.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. Mr. Schnell?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason that I am going to make a recommendation that this item be tabled is because to amend the SUP, the SUP was adopted by ordinance. To amend an ordinance, you need to adopt another ordinance. There is not a written printed ordinance in front of the city council tonight, so for this item to be acted on, there needs to be an ordinance, and I would recommend that the item be tabled until the June meeting, to give staff and the city attorney time to prepare an ordinance that will answer the concern that Ms. McLennan raised about what use would be, what the use would be of the property. Since the council has conducted its public hearing, there is not a requirement to have another public hearing, but I, I don't think there's anything to act on tonight, because there is no ordinance for the council to debate, consider, and potentially act upon. In regard to the question that Ms. Baker raised about the ordinance, where in the previous ordinances adopting the, granting the SUP and amending the SUP were adopted before September 12, 2017. On September 12 of 2017, by Ordinance Number 2017-09-12-H, Section 50-497 of the City Code of Ordinances, the zoning ordinance was amended. I believe, although I have not double-checked, that ordinance amendment may have been to add the statement that all, that Ms. Baker was commenting on, which is 50-497B, that says, "All districts except A districts, in any district except A, the following uses may be requested for designation, designation as special uses. One, general care hospitals; two, religious or philanthropic institutions; and three, nursing homes." Having considered that, and having also considered the provisions of the federal statute that Pastor Gordon referred to, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act adopted in 2000, it, it does appear to me that the governing body, by adopting Section 50-497B, Subpart C, Subpart 2, that would treat religious or philanthropic institutions differently than other uses in the A district, or other uses in the city, could be construed as placing a substantial burden on a religious organization, which must be justified by a compelling governmental interest. So once the religious organization has said that we feel that our not being able to use this property for our residential use for our ministries, and considers that to be a substantial burden, then it becomes an obligation of the governing body to justify by a compelling governmental interest that the use should not be permitted. And, and the governmental body is directed to act in the way that is least restrictive possible. So hopefully with that guidance, the council can revisit this item in June and take action one way or the other on a proposed ordinance to amend the SUP that will include a specification that the permitted use of 113 Ivywood Circle would be as the residential use, as, as described by Pastor Gordon.
Move to table as suggested by Mr. Schnell.
First by Mr. McCormick, second by Ms. Winger, all in favor? Okay, unanimous.
I have a question, Mr. Schnell, or Mr. Rappley. Is anybody here about the Lemonwood property tonight?
That's a little later in the agenda. She's asking if anybody's here on the Lemonwood property?
Is anyone here on Items 14 and 15?
I'm sorry?
14 and 15. Actually, I sent an email to the mayor from Mr. Earl, who had requested this item to be tabled again.
Well, I'd actually like to pull it, because it gets tabled and tabled and tabled, so I'd just like to-
I'll second that.
Can, can, can we wait, item is open for discussion?
Yeah.
Again, just a procedural thing, we have an agenda, let's follow the agenda. I think by the motion to table, Item 2, we would go to Number 3, unless somebody-
Well-
...with consent of the rest of the council, moves I, moves up Items 14 and 15 to be pulled.
I'd like to move up Item 14 and 15.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Sanderson?
And then I'd like to pull both items, because they've just been tabled too much, so just like to pull them off and not have them tabled.
Can we vote for disapproval, or?
First, I-
Second.
Mayor, unless there's unanimous consent on the moving it up, you need to vote first on the motion to move them up.
Okay.
If there's unanimous consent, then we can move on to Ms. Winger's second motion.
Sure. So we have a motion to pull Items, was it 14 and 15, forward, and the second, by Ms. Winger, a second by Mr. Sanderson, all in favor? It's unanimous?
Now, now, now Ms. Winger has made a motion to pull the items rather than table them. If you pull them, then they do not go on the agenda until there's a new application and a new request.
Got you.
I will second that.
Ms. Winger, your motion still stands to pull them? Okay, a second by Mr. Sanderson, all in favor? Unanimous again, here we go.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to recess the rest of the agenda to Saturday morning at 10:00 AM, if that's satisfactory to everybody.
I did, and that-
So Ms. Winger offered to recess the rest of the agenda till Saturday at 10:00 AM. I have a little bit of concern with that personally, just because that's off schedule from what we typically do, and I don't know how much participation that we're gonna get from council, but that's my personal opinion. Mr. Schnell?
She's asking to move the rest of the meeting to Saturday morning?
Yes, sir, Mr. McCormick, she's asking to continue the rest of the meeting. Ms. Winger is suggesting that we, is making a motion that we continue the rest of the agenda items Saturday morning at 10:00 AM. And I believe Mr. Schnell is about to tell us something.
Mayor, I, I need a minute to see if that's permitted under the Open Meetings Act.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mark? It gives us 72 hours.
Mayor, I'm not sure whether our staff can be present. I cannot be present to 10:00 AM Saturday morning. As Mr. Rappley mentioned to me a moment ago, it is Labor Day weekend, I'm sorry, Memorial Day weekend. The Open Meetings Act provides that if the, if the meeting is not recessed to the next regular business day, it is not continued to the next regular business day, but is continued to another day, the governing body must give notice of the meeting's continuance to the other day, which would require staff to go ahead and repost, and, and, you know, hopefully give some notice to the public, but, but as you said, the citizens of Castle Hills are familiar with the governing body meeting on the second Tuesday of the month, and it, it just seems to me that that ought to be considered. We, there are still people here who came to, to hear the business that, that's on this agenda. agenda, and, you know, I, I would ask the governing body to take into consideration the needs and schedules of the city manager, the, the police and fire chiefs, the head of public works, if not me.
So I'd like to ask if we have anybody in the audience that's here for a specific agenda item that we have not yet to discuss.
Can we, so you're saying that we can, we can recess till tomorrow?
As I understand, that's correct.
Okay. Do you want to do that?
I'd like to amend Ms. Winger's motion to recess until 6:30 PM tomorrow evening to resume deliberation on remaining matters of the agenda.
Before we move forward, I'd like to make sure that that's not going to be an issue for staff because this is a last-minute item. Everybody's okay?
We have to be here. You know, having family, I have a daughter, school program tomorrow night, but I'll be here and miss it. I'd have to check with the rest of the staff accordingly from that standpoint.
Okay.
I, I would like to say on one of the agenda items, on the, the Banyon update and project, that was kind of Mr. Gregory's project. He's been working with our engineers on that, and I was going to request to table that to June anyways, because also our engineer was running late as well to be here to present.
What time is your school function?
My daughter's school function is at 6:30.
So how much earlier could we do it? Would that, that, that'll work into your schedule, won't it? If we did it earlier in the day, like?
Mistress Anderson? She's asking if your schedule will permit doing it earlier in the day tomorrow?
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock. Wow. Give me a second to meditate on that.
He's asking for a second to meditate.
Let me think about that for a second.
Before you make a decision, can you table item five until Mr. Gregory's back on the June meeting?
Can I get a motion to table item number five?
What is item five?
Item number five is discussion-
Update on the Banyon roadway and Glen Tower project.
Right.
One of Gregory's projects, so moved.
So moved, first by Mr. McCormick.
So we want to table that until June, or what?
Till the first meeting in June.
Yeah, but we're not going to have another meeting.
Table whatever. He's not going to be back tomorrow or Saturday anyway.
What?
Mr. McCormick saying that Mr. Gregory will not be back until next week. So he's asking if we can-
So you want to table the whole thing until next week?
And no, until the regular, the first regularly scheduled meeting in June. So we have a first by Mr. McCormick.
But then we're going to have next month's agenda as well as this month's agenda. We're going to be back in the same thing. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
That's correct. Will we have a first by Mr. McCormick? Do we have a second?
Okay. So you're saying you want to separate out item five to table?
I'm just, my motion just related to item five, which, I heard somebody make a comment. I think it was Mr. Rappley.
On item five, to bring back to the June meeting when Councilman Gregory is here.
Okay. So moved.
First second by Ms. Winger. All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor? Ms. Gonzalez?
But that's, we're just voting on item five.
Item five, yes. Passed unanimously. We're going to be moving number five to the regularly scheduled meeting in June. Do we have any consensus on recess of this meeting, or shall we continue on?
I think the last question was whether we can recess until tomorrow and resume deliberations. And there were some questions going around about people checking the schedule to see if they could do that. Mr. Sanderson specifically asked for two minutes, which he's had, and more. And I don't know if there's other questions. I think the staff maybe need to, maybe need to be asked that question as well if they need to be here.
So four o'clock will be fine. I think I can do that.
I don't know that they do. Is that convenient for you, Mr. Rappley?
It's not a problem, Ms. Winger.
I'm sorry?
It, it's fine. It works for me.
Okay.
Perfect. So we have a, a motion to recess the meeting until tomorrow at 4:00 PM.
So are we, we're discussing and tabling item four?
No, we're not.
No, no, no. I'm saying that the rest of the agenda would be four.
As, as I understand it, Ms. Winger made a motion to recess until Saturday morning at 10:00 AM. I don't know whether that was seconded.
No, it wasn't because we changed-
It wasn't seconded, so that motion failed for lack of a second.
Right.
Mr. McCormick made a motion to have the meeting at 6:30, recess the meeting until 6:30 tomorrow. Mr. McCormick, have you amended that now to say, to meet at four o'clock tomorrow?
I'll accept a four o'clock amendment. I'll, I'll amend it, yes.
You'll amend your motion to say four o'clock tomorrow?
Four o'clock tomorrow.
Okay. Mayor, you need to see if there's a second to that motion.
Can I get a second? A second by Ms. Winger. All in favor? Unanimous.
Now, I have one, one item, the next item on the agenda, or item four, if I can address that.
I believe we've recessed the meeting, so we'll pick it back up tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Is that correct, Mr. Schnell?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Meeting is adjourned for today. Thank you all.
Meeting is, is in recess until-
Sorry, recess.
In recess until four o'clock on Wednesday, May 22nd.
We'll be starting with agenda item number three.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you all for being here.